All right, at 6:30, we'll call the Monday, May 9th, 2022 Regular City Council Meeting to Order. If we could start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Are there any additions to the agenda tonight?
I don't have any additions, but I'm going to pull under the Consent Agenda, Letter F. There was a decision that needs to be made with that, and I should have been put under the under the reports and recommendations.
Thank you. So no additions to the agenda. I'll look for motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion, second. I'll favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries four zero. That will take us to Public Comments. Excuse me. If there's anyone who would like to discuss anything that is not on the agenda, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close Public Comments. We'll move to the Consent Agenda. City Administrator indicated she'd like to pull Letter F. Is there any other items that need to be pulled for further discussion? Then I will, we will move F down to seven five.
I think we didn't do motions.
Right, that's, yeah, that's going to be part, part of it. So moving F down to seven five and then approving the Consent Agenda with the remaining items. I'll look for that motion.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. I'll favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries four zero. That will take us, Maggie, to seven A one, the 2022 Long Term Financial Plan.
All right. Mayor Dodge and Council, in front of you this evening is the 2022 Long Term Financial Plan document. So this is a planning document that we review and update on an annual basis. It's a guidance document that we use when we plan for large capital projects and purchases. And based on these planned needs, it allows the city to forecast the future tax rates, fund balances, and debt projections. Abdo Financial Solutions has been preparing this document with staff input for the past eight years. And with that, I'll let Steve McDonald with Abdo Financial Solutions go into the document more in depth.
Thanks, Maggie. Mayor and Council, good evening. Let's see, we've got a, the document in front of you. I'll probably go to page nine, Maggie. We've gone through this a few times over the past couple of years. And just a reminder, as Maggie laid out, this is a planning document. Hopefully, it informs your budget process and your CIPs as you work through those over the summer. We hope to make evident the cash balances over the next five years, any debt that would be required in the effect of that debt, and then the, just to quantify the capital outlay and those needs, and to make sure cash flow is sufficient to cover those, those costs. So with the assumptions, operating expenses are based on a 3% inflation rate. Revenue is a 2% inflation rate. The interest earnings, so outstanding cash balances, we're only using 1%, which was realistic for the last five or six years. Now is a bit higher, and operating expenses could be perceived a bit higher, too. But again, this gives you a general idea. The housing growth, if you look on the next page, page 10, we've used 25 units for the next five years as the housing growth, and then one commercial industrial unit each year for the next four or five years. So that, that drives our, our market value and tax capacity calculations. And we'll talk about tax rates here in a little bit. The new projects are identified on the individual fund pages, so things like streets and parks and fire and all of those have a separate calculation. With bonding, we've used, we have two bonds outstanding for the streets projects based on the street CIP, and those would be factored at a 3% interest rate. And, yeah, that, that's about it. Let's see, let's go to page 16. 16 and 17. Do you have these side by side? Can you do the?
Yeah, I can do that.
The view? No, the, so in the disp, oh, you have this in a web display. Well, yeah, let's go to just page 16, and I'll cover these.
All right, is 16?
Oh. I'll tell you when to stop, I guess. Okay, all right. So go back one.
Well, they're not the way we want them.
Yeah, all right. Well, that's okay. I'll explain. So this is the Schedule of Property Tax Levis and Tax Rates. And for 2022, your outstanding tax levy was $1,342. So that's, that's what was certified to the county. And then if we go to the next page, if you want to scroll down a little bit. Yeah, you can. Okay. So from $1,342, the 2023, which you'll be dealing with here in the next few months, shows an increase to $1,532. Mainly, that's to continue funding the capital and also the, the 20, which one went up here? Let me just get that in mind. Oh, the, the 2021 bonds, the levy in 2022 was $53,000, and that now is scheduled to increase to 184. Okay, so that's already what has been written into the levy increases. Most everything else stayed fairly consistent. The one thing that also came in news is that $47,250 is the street levy. So based on the CIP that you have outstanding, if you decide to levy bonds for those projects, so you haven't done it yet, we would estimate that that levy would be $47,000. Okay? Now, one thing to pay attention to, is see the $155,000, that's on the top, that's the debt for the Geo Improvement Utility Refunding Bonds of 2014. Okay, that's the final levy amount for there. So you're going to have $155,000 dropping off. So if you look over a three-year period, your, your tax levy does go up next year if you follow the schedule, but then goes back down the following year. And you can decide on how important that increase is, knowing that there's a decrease out there. Where you'd probably make adjustments is in some of the other, the parks or the fire funding that you've been doing. It's been at a decent amount. It's enough to fund the projects, but maybe you defer that or look at that. Okay? So that's really the key thing, I think, in the, the whole document, is that your engineers done a good job of, of laying out planned street projects. If those get thumbs up, then there's going to be needing some debt to fund those, which you'd be working with sellers to put together. Okay? Let's go to the graphs at the very last two pages. So this is kind of the big, the graphs really kind of give an indication of the big picture of what is the effect of, of all of these assumptions in there. Let's see, is there? So the first one on the top left is your general fund fund balance relative to expenditures. You have a, a target of, of having a reserve level of 50% in the general fund, so whatever you plan to spend in the following year, you hope to keep 50% of that amount in working capital. And based on what we've, how we've projected this out, the general fund stays consistent, and your fund balance remains adequate. I do make a note in some of the results that, at the end of '21, your fund balance did exceed that 50% target by about $40,000. In the past, you've set up a fund balance transfer policy, so it's a good cushion above that 50%. The cash balance by planned use, you can see over a five-year period, that total amount stays above $6 million, so pretty consistent. Drops a bit in 2024 because of the capital projects that are being completed, but overall remains a good, consistent reserve over that period of time. Okay, tax rates, because this is another key performance indicator when you look at the city. The, the scheduled tax rates actually decrease from 2022 to 2026, so drops below 40%. A lot of that's driven by a few of the levies dropping off, the bond levies dropping off, and then also the growth that's projected. So if you hit 25 houses at the valuations that we've included, that's going to help your tax rates go down. And then we have the comparison between some, some comparable cities or, or Carver County cities, and you can see that your current tax rate is quite a bit less than Cologne, Norwood, or Hamburg. Gives you an idea of context of how do you look compared to some other cities. Okay? And then a look at the real property tax dollars. So on the upper left, you can see that the, the 2022 total tax levy was about $1,309, and that does go up in 2023 to just above $1,500,000, but then comes back down and stays consistent. And then the, for an individual house, we have, that, that graph represents two things. It represents the real dollars of, of city tax levy and the valuation. So the valuation's on the right, that's that dark line that's, that's going up, so that shows an inflation assumption for house values. But with what we projected here, the, the individual tax effect would actually go down from 2022 to 2026, assuming new houses come on board and, and we stay close to where we're at. That would, that's what a, a house at, starting at a $250,000 value would, would end up. Now, debt is shown in the bottom left-hand corner. And what's notable here is that the, really, the dark amount at the top is the new debt that would be issued. So those street bonds that we talked about, that really replaces and keeps your debt levy for those, for that five-year period. And as you're growing, the need to issue debt is, it becomes more certain. But you can see you're paying down the other bonds, the Geo Revenue Bonds are the yellow line, and those shrink quite a bit from 2022 to 2026. And then the Geo Improvement Bonds gradually decrease. And then another key performance measurement is debt per capita. So from 2021 to 2026, we go from over $3,500 per person down to just under $3,000 per person. So that, the, the debt load is decreasing. Okay? So that really kind of, I think that, yeah, that hits all the highlights. Again, like the key thing are the two bond issues that we have outstanding. The other thing that you have control and you'll review as part of the budget process is the CIP. Where you have projects or things slotted is something that you'll work through and say, do we need to do this park project this year, or can we kick it out another year or two? Maggie and I went through those as we put this together and, and moved some other things out that council had given direction on. But that's, that's kind of the magic of this, is that it gives you an easy way to say, okay, if we do it this year, we can afford it. Maybe we want to do it a couple of years down the road. Might cost more, but we'd be better, in better position to do it, so.
The benefits, the benefits of having this, we knew this was coming, we knew 2023 was coming up a few years ago, so we didn't have to start juggling around.
Yeah.
For that reason. So it's just, just another reason why this tool is so nice to have.
Yeah, and you've done a real nice job of, of levying for capital, and that really helps your cash flow, a lot of the things that you want to do, rather than be, be forced to have to issue debt.
Okay, any, any other questions? Anything else you want to? More explanation or touch on more?
I was just putting up an example of one. This is the General Capital Fund that we do our city buildings and public works out of. So this is just an example for, for newer council members of how we put those projects in order of priority and how it kind of goes through the document, but.
Yeah, when we get into the real detailed schedules, people tend to lose interest in the numbers. So I try to stick to, I like the pictures myself, so that gives me a better idea, but.
Very helpful. I appreciate it. Anything else Maggie to add or any other questions?
Nope, I think I'm good.
Perfect. Well, thanks, Steve. I appreciate it again.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in. Good seeing you.
Yes, you too. All right. No other questions? I'll head out into the heat. Where did this?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks again.
Bye.
All right, Maggie, seven A two, the executive search, document review and approval.
All right. Mayor Dodge and Council, the city is in the process of preparing for the executive search, or sorry, preparing for the executive search process for the new city administrator. The city is working with the firm David Drones and Associates. There's a timeline that was provided and is within your packet for the, that highlights the search process timeline. As part of the timeline, at this meeting, the city council will be doing a final review of the job profile, job description, salary range, and hiring process for the city administrative position. So this evening, Pat Melvin with David Drones and Associates is here to go through each document with the city council. And with that, I'm recommending that we start the process and review and discuss each item that needs to be approved.
Thank you. Welcome, Pat. Thank you for coming in.
Good evening, Mayor Dodge, council members and staff. Thank you for having me here this evening. So yes, as Maggie indicated, we're, our process is moving forward. So I appreciate all of you, as well as staff, taking time to meet with me briefly to go over some of the attributes that we were looking for in the next city administrator. So I provide you with a letter dated May 4th, like laid out some of the different things I'd like to address tonight. One of the things I realized is I kind of got my order mixed up there, maybe too many hot cocos or something like that when preparing this agenda. But what I'd like to do is maybe instead of starting with the position profile, maybe if we could just start out with the, the job description, then hit upon the salary range, because those pieces are actually incorporated into the profile. So if we want to just take them, you know, one at a time, go through, I'd love to hear your input and make any changes that you see necessary as we go through. The first one that I wanted to talk with you about is the job description. I did ask Maggie, as the outgoing city administrator, to take a look at that job description, just to make sure that it's accurate. And she did a great job of doing that. There were a couple things that she maybe suggested we could do, and I would certainly offer that up now for your consideration, one of which is to change in the upper right-hand corner, they have supervisory duties listed as public works, fire department, and deputy clerk. It's my understanding from Maggie, that should be city clerk. So that would be one correction. And then there's a few other minor corrections to just the time allocated to the different responsibilities. So based on discussion with Maggie, the 30% for directing and managing all aspects of the financial and administrative, she thought that would be more appropriately listed as 35%. Then moving to the second one communicates with the city council, she thought that would be more appropriately at 45%. And then, last but not least, revising the supervision, leadership, oversight, and involvement from 10% to 15%. So that would bring the job description up to date and current, and certainly when you get a new administrator, it might be something that you want them to take a look at, you know, a year in, as they're becoming more familiar and kind of finding their way in that position.
That's good. I'm good with those changes. I thought the job description looked good. I'm glad, Maggie, that you did take a look at some of those, those percentages. I think that's important to capture that now, that you have it dialed in.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm, I'm fine with those changes.
Would you like a motion for that, Maggie?
Do one for each thing, is that?
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay. I'll look for a motion to approve the city admin, the city administrator's job description with the change to city clerk, from deputy clerk to city clerk, and then changing the responsibilities to 35, 45, 15, and 5% respectively.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
We'll see.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion?
Thank you.
I'll favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries four zero.
I jumped the gun.
Oh, you're good.
All right. Thank you. The next item that we should have some discussion about is the salary range. And so just to give you a little bit of background, DDA Human Resources actually worked with the city of mayor back, I believe it was in 2017. And at that time, we did kind of an analysis. We looked at different salaries, looked at the market comparison. And basically, it was based on that, that we developed who the comparison cities were. And as you can see, those comparison cities are listed up here on the board. Those are the ones that were determined to be comparable to the city of mayor in terms of, you know, different types of revenues, city services that you offer, et cetera. So I simply took that information and used those same comparison cities to come up with where things are at today. And that's how I came up with these numbers. So in some cases, this information was pulled from the League of Minnesota Cities Salary Survey. And so if a city had perhaps a 2021 number, we just basically concluded that the 2022 number would be 3% based on that, which is kind of the, the standard average of what we do when we try and come up with projecting what wages are going to be. So as you can see there, the range minimum for those that were reporting, $71,589 was the minimum. The range max was $90,918. And then the actual wages, so what individuals are actually making in these city administrative positions is about $84,000. So that gives you kind of a, a range or an idea. Just last week, I worked with the city of Now Then, which is a population of about 4,000, and they went ahead and they approved a salary range of 90 to 120. However, a lot of the motivation behind their salary being that high was that they've, they've had some challenges in the media and with the loss of some employees recently. So they were specifically targeting a higher number, knowing that they would have some challenges. I do feel that, you know, mayor is well situated. I don't think there are going to be a lot of challenges, but I certainly am not saying for that reason, keep the wage low. I'm just saying that, you know, I think your city is, is well positioned for candidates to be interested in the position at a reasonable wage. So.
Yeah, and I think that's where we're kind of, I think it's helpful to get some of the oral, you know, these are great with populate, but it's hard to compare, you know, how many public works they have, what do they do, how many employee, you know, it's hard to get a handle on all that, too. So it's, gets challenging. So I'm glad you, you know, you, you got your finger on the pulse and know where things are, how they've been going, so.
Yeah.
And as Personnel Committee, we purposely didn't set a range. We want to bring council, we figured there'd be a lot of discussion. So, you know, we, we discussed it, but.
And then, can you just explain for the job titles? Because there is some differences, like city clerk, and then clerk slash administrator.
Correct.
And then there are some outliers to make the average look a little off, was the things that I noted when I saw this.
Yes. So obviously, you know, the city administrator is the one who has the greatest authority. And as you're going down, you know, city administrator, clerk, that really is an indication that, you know, some people have this idea that if you're city administrator, you're going to sit in an office and direct people in terms of what they do. But I think, you know, having a city administrator clerk kind of is a clear indication to people that, you know, you're also going to be manning the front counter. You may be taking minutes. I mean, especially in a small government with limited staff, you're going to be doing a lot of different things. Not to say that, you know, as a city administrator in, in Atkin, that you're not going to be doing that, but I think people or council members really want to just put more emphasis on that, you know, city administrator dash clerk to give people a better idea of what the job entails. But ultimately, the one that has the most authority and the ability, you know, to carry out the council's directives is an administrator. And I think that the majority of candidates are more interested, I believe, in a city administrator position than they may be in a administrator clerk position. Because I think titles, they're saying something, but I think titles can get in the way of some applicants applying. So I think what we did in the administrative attributes was we specifically called out, you know, the fact that mayor's looking for somebody who can, who can be a leader, but then also somebody who knows how to work in a small local government office where, you know, there'll be interruptions, where they may have to man the counter, where they may have to do some of those routine things just to provide coverage, because people have vacations and different things. So I think we hit upon that in that section to let people know that, you know, you're not going to come here and just sit in an office and direct people. You're going to be involved in helping the city process things.
All right. So any thoughts? Does anyone want to start out what we, what you would?
I think the range is low, personally.
The one that we had?
The 62 to 78. I don't know what you wanted to start with. I'm just, I mean.
Start some conversation.
You know, I look at.
Where we, where we were at the Personnel Committee, we were thinking somewhere around 75 to 80, up to 105, somewhere in there, you know, so we can.
Yeah, right. I, I just looked at like, kind of the seven county metro, you know, and then, right, like you look at, like for me, Winstead, seeing, you know, that's just west of here, but they're going up to that 93,000, actually paying the 92. I mean, we're not as big as Watertown. We don't need to be in that range. You know, but I definitely, I guess I think 75 to even 95 is probably a good range. I mean.
I just don't, I, I get nervous of trying to losing candidates because of that's why I don't mind going, I don't mind widening a little bit. I mean, we can't go, I would go 50 to 200, but widening out some so we get all the candidates, then we look at it, you know, experience is going to.
Yeah, 75 to 105 or.
Dictate where we're at. But, you know, and some of those, even Birchwood, that, that person at, you know, 58,000, they could only be working three days a week, too, you know, because it's such a small community. It's probably a part-time gig, so some of those numbers. But I would be fine with 75 to 105.
Mine would be all about experience, and it would allow, I mean, that's, you know, that's the problem we have, is we're so small, but we also want good candidates. We want somebody to come in that knows what they're doing and is a go-getter. And by having a little bit of a, that cushion in the higher range, I think will really allow for not losing out on candidates that are qualified.
I think 105 is a good, 75 to 105.
Does that kind of align what you would be thinking? I mean.
Yeah. No, I, I agree. You know, whoever, the candidates, when they apply, I mean, this is a range. You know, what we've been finding, you know, lately is that sometimes it may be that you get someone who doesn't have all the experience and needs a little training, but, you know, that's where you've got flexibility in terms of, this is the range. If we're going to have to spend, you know, $10,000 to, to train you, maybe that's also reflected in the, the wage, that we're paying you a little bit less, but we're going to send you to all these different trainings to bring you up to speed and to mold you into the, the administrator that, you know, the council wants you to be. the administrator that, you know, the council wants you to be. So, I do, I agree very much with, you know, allowing some room in there, and ultimately, when it comes down to it, it's gonna be up to you to decide what that number is, based on the candidate, their qualifications and their experience. So, you aren't committing yourself to anything by allowing yourself some room.
To your point, at least, right, we don't lose out on somebody because we have ninety-five and they want a hundred.
Right.
I mean, we can determine that.
Right.
We don't want to pay them a hundred, but.
I'd like to have a little more flexibility, now, will it matter when it comes down to it, maybe not.
Right.
Maybe we won't be getting people with less experience, because we're a smaller community, and we're right on it, perfect, and we'll move forward, and, but, I like having the buffer.
Because I assume if we say seventy-five to ninety-five, and somebody comes in at a hundred and five, and we really like them, we're gonna be, I mean, we can make adjustments, but again, to your point, we might have missed out on somebody else.
Right.
Because they didn't apply.
Now, if we go up to, if we're gonna go up to a hundred and five, then it's fair to the people who didn't apply, thinking, well, now they maybe would have jumped in the pool, knowing, so. All right, I'll, let's, we can start out a motion, if someone would like to make one, we can throw one out and see where it goes, if someone wants to make a motion on the salary range.
I'll make a motion to do the salary range seventy-five to a hundred and five thousand.
All right.
I'll second.
Motion, a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, then, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, say aye. Motion carries four zero, seventy-five thousand to a hundred and five thousand.
So, the next part that we'll be taking a look at is the profile, so, this was put together just based on the job description, based on the community, and based on your input when you sat down and talked with me, and, you know, Councilmember Wegner and I did so by, by phone, so, all of your input was included in coming up with kind of the attributes that are desired in your next city administrator. So, if you would like to, I, we can, anything in here can be changed, revised. This is your opportunity to, you know, make those changes. This is what will be posted at the various sites as we take a look at making individuals more informed about the position and the wonderful opportunity here in mayor, so.
Perfect. Did anyone have anything that jumped out? I thought it looked good, I mean, and I've seen these, you know, we saw these before, one, oh, four years ago, so I, I liked them, on that page, Maggie, is there any need, or is it? No, the one with the employees, the org chart?
Oh.
Do we need, is there any value to put in the number of public works employees, the number, so it's clear on there, just by looking at it?
Sure, yeah, no, we could certainly do that, that would.
I, I know I saw more of it in there, but, well, I guess city clerk could be one, yeah.
And public works would be two.
Maybe just in public works, put two, maybe a two. Unless, there's no value, I.
Yeah, no, we can certainly put the numbers in there, and you're right, it just shows that you're a little bigger organization than what.
How hard is it to change pictures?
Oh, not hard at all.
It's not a big deal, obviously, but I think we should have the new Watertown around there versus the old one. And I know that's minor, but if it's a big deal, don't worry about it.
No, we can, yeah, we can certainly, okay.
I can get that to you, Pat.
Okay, okay, yeah, no, we can certainly change that, that's not a.
Any other, anyone else, feel free to jump in, if you want, I gotta, I thought I had one more item.
Makes me want to live here.
Well, there's gonna be twenty-five new homes built, so, right? Plenty of options.
And the desired attributes, I think you, you did a great job on those, I think you nailed. And, and again, I'm assuming you did hear a lot of the same, some of the same stuff, but I, I thought you captured everything great on there.
We're obviously, I mean, not to state the obvious, we're gonna change the salary range.
Yeah. That must have been all I had.
Yeah, I was gonna say that, instead of the fire truck, can we do the bill, actual building?
Because that picture wasn't even in our fire station, was it?
No, it's not. But yeah, that's, that's a good idea, yeah.
Because it's very pretty, and we've worked really hard to make it look.
Pretty.
And did we capture it in there about talking about that we do have wastewater treatment plant, we have water filtration that we have, and what class they are? I mean, I know we're not looking for a public works employee, but an administrator may, because it does say in there that, you know, some basic knowledge on these items, do we want to put what we have or no? Or will it not really matter to the administrator?
Yeah, no, I think it would be under the, there should be some.
Is that right, oh, maybe it was in the job descriptions.
Desireded, someone with a basic understanding of water and waste upper, wastewater operations.
So, maybe that's good enough?
And, and maybe what we could do is we could put something in where we're talking about, welcome to mayor, mayor's a growing community, population, the city is rich in history, you know, maybe we could just make a statement in there, you know, the city is responsible for service, you know, something like that to include.
That'd be great.
Do we maybe want some updated park pictures, too? Because we have added new equipment, new.
Quad.
Well, just, I mean, some of these look kind of, you know.
Dated?
Yeah. Okay, okay, yeah, no, we can, we can certainly work with Maggie or anybody who would like to, to get some newer photos. I mean, not that a picture's gonna necessarily sell it, but we're gonna, you know, put our best foot forward. Oh, yeah, yeah, no, and you should, you're exactly right, you're exactly right, so. No pictures of here, right?
Could we get the parking lot filled out? Otherwise, I'm, I'm good with everything else, and if others want to jump in.
Mayor, just to go back, so, have something in there showing that the city is, has a wastewater treatment facility, water, anything.
Yeah, just kind of that they're operating their own, operating our own plants, yeah, whatever class they are, yeah. Like I said, I think some updated pictures, Maggie, that you should, you should be able to help, I assume.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah, new fire station.
Okay, yeah, no, we can certainly make that, make that happen, so.
Anything else? Does that give you enough, then, for that?
Yes, no, so, so what I'll be doing then is, we'll be making changes to this tomorrow, and we'll be getting it posted. And then, basically, what I'll be doing is I'll be sending weekly emails to the council, just letting, you know, you know, where we're at with things, with regards to how many applications have we received, I'll let you know kind of some of the work that I'm doing behind the scenes, reaching out to individuals and trying to make connections. I will certainly provide a copy of the profile to each of you, and if you would also do everything that you can to promote it, the city will put it on its website, and I will send you a list of all the different places where the job is posted. If there's any other places that you would recommend that we post it, please let me know, and we're more than happy to get that in there as soon as we can, so, yeah, then it's.
Do you want a motion for the position profile, then, to approve it, Maggie?
Yeah, we can do it with the mentioned changes.
That we, okay, we'll look for a motion to approve the position profile with the salary changes, updated photos, and adding a little bit more on our wastewater and water treatment facilities.
Perfect, perfect, so. I'll make that motion.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
Do we have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, say aye. Motion carries four zero.
Thank you very much. Then, I was hoping we could just talk a little bit about the timeline and kind of where that puts us. I'm hoping that everybody can mark July twentieth, reserve that date. Are there any known conflicts at this point? So, that would be, basically, what we would do is we would bring candidates in to conduct interviews. We have done it, you know, different ways. Sometimes, we have staff conduct an interview separate from the council, and then they provide input to the council, the council conducts their own interview, and then after that interview is done, they receive feedback from the staff, not necessarily selecting, this is my first, this is my second, but just saying, you know, I felt that this individual was very knowledgeable in his answer on a finance question, or, you know, even, he didn't seem to be consistent in answering this time and that time, so, it's just kind of more the insights that they may have if they're, with their technical specialty that they provide to the council. We also have options for, you know, a meet and greet with the public, I mean, it really is what you, as a council, would like it to be, because in addition to, you know, us, the candidate selling him or herself to us, we're also trying to sell them on the community of mayor and the job opportunities, so, we do try and educate them a little bit more about the community and why it would be a great place to live and work. So, I just, we don't need a decision on that right now, but I just wanted to offer that up as a possibility. Some communities will do a, you know, hop, have all the candidates hop on a bus, and they'll just drive through town pointing out different things, you know, taking a little tour, all that is possible, so, you can think about that, and we'll have further discussions when I come next time, hopefully, we can nail that down at that point.
We can even have some other discussions in a work session, too, to start getting some of that, take care of. So, on July twentieth, then, if that turns, I know that's a little ways out, but if that starts turning to a conflict, let's, I don't know, let the interim administrator, and Pat know that we might have to adjust that date or figure something out, so, let's keep that in mind.
Will be like an afternoon.
Is that a Monday?
It's a Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday.
Yeah, yeah. Evening council? It'll probably be, it'll probably be afternoon.
If we did bring candidates in, you know, for a tour or a community meet and greet, where would that fall in, would that be before the special meeting, between July twelfth and twentieth, where, where would that typically fit in, then?
Actually, we would, that would all fit into the same day.
Would be the same?
Yeah, so, so typically, what we've done, you know, it, it also depends on the number of candidates. We typically shoot for about four to six candidates to bring in for interviews, simply because of the fact that these individuals may have applications out elsewhere, and so, you know, from the time that you select the finalists to bring in to win the actual interview date, because I'll be out here on June twenty-seventh, at that time, you know, we will narrow it down to four to six finalists that you would like to interview. Between June twenty-seventh and July twentieth, sometimes candidates withdraw, and so, that's why we stick with, you know, four to six candidates. And what we'll do is, yeah, depending on the number, we'll, we'll have the staff, if that's what you choose to do, we'll have the staff conduct an interview in the morning, and then in the afternoon, the council can conduct their interview, you know, oftentimes over lunch, maybe they go out with the mayor or somebody from the city and take a brief tour of town or something like that. So, it's all, it all fits into that one day. You know, certainly, if you would like to do two days, I mean, there are cities that have, you know, stretched it out over two days.
Yeah, I don't know if we would do two days, but.
Yeah.
Last year, we did do.
We did a meet and greet?
Yeah, it was at the fire station, we did that with people throughout the community. And I think it was, and we'll talk more with Maggie.
Yeah, it was, it was.
Yeah, what did you think of that experience, was it worth, was it beneficial?
Yeah, I thought it was good, so there was an element where it was with a staff interview, and then a community meet and greet, and then a final city council interview. I thought it went well, yeah, I thought it was a good process, like, I've seen, like, I, for other cities I've been in, I've seen it different, like, different ways, like you mentioned, every city does it differently, but I thought that process went really well, just having a combination of, just meeting residents and for sure, staff and council, but I thought the resident meet and greet was pretty good, too, so.
We'll talk more on that, then, and get that solidified as we get closer.
Yeah, no, that sounds great, so.
And so, is thirty days from the selection of the finalists until the interview, is that common? It seems long.
Yeah, yeah, and we have worked with other cities that have always wanted to kind of move that up. The reason that we have that significant period of time is that we have to get, you know, background checks, we have to get credit checks, and oftentimes, when we put that out there, we, we, what we're doing is we're asking the individual finalist to give us that information, sometimes that takes a few days, and so, it, it does kind of push it out a little bit more, but that's what we feel is the right time for applicants to get information to us, for us to get it out to a third party, for the third party to get the results and get it back to us. Unfortunately, it does take a period of time to get all that done. You, as the council, are gonna have information, so, at the beginning, before you even select your finalists, you're gonna have a video interview, so, candidates will actually, through their computer, will go ahead and will take a video interview that consists of about six questions, and they don't know what the question is, they'll have twenty minutes to think about the, their response, and then the video camera on their computer will record, and they have about a minute and a half to respond to the questions. I mean, it's a really great tool because it allows you to see what type of presence they have, you know, obviously, it's in front of a computer versus in front of an audience, but it gives you an idea. You're also gonna have their resumes, their cover letter, and then you're gonna have a personality assessment, that's going to, you know, kind of tell you what type of person they're like, do they seek input before they make decisions, or are they an individual who likes to do a lot of evaluation and then, you know, moves into a decision? So, you're gonna have a lot of information prior to even selecting finalists, you're gonna have information to help make that decision, and then, as you get to the finalist and to the interviews, you're gonna have the credit check, you're gonna have a background, you're gonna have references, you're gonna have a cognitive ability test that's gonna look at their reasoning, their logic, so there's a lot of information that, you know, then comes to that final interview, so. We will be arranging all that kind of behind the scenes and providing it to you, so that you can look at it, you know, on your computer in the comfort of your own home, you can go back, review things, all that information will be available to you. When we come to that meeting on June twenty-seventh, at that point, the candidates' names are not public, so what we'll be doing is we'll be referring to candidates by numbers, and then, after you, as council, decide who you want to invite in for an interview, those names do become public, and what we will do is we'll put together a short bio on each of the candidates that we'll provide to the city, and then you can release, as you see appropriate, to the newspaper or anybody like that, so.
Perfect. Any other questions on the timeline? I guess that's it, you have everything you need for now, then?
I do, yeah, so, thank you very much for your time.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thanks. Thanks.
All right, that will take us to seven A three of the interim city hall schedule.
Mayor Dodge and council, throughout the interim process of hiring a new city administrator, there will be times in which we will have limited staffing at city hall. As we approved, the city administrator, interim city administrator will be working between twenty and twenty-four hours a week. And that's a twenty-four hour work week. The city clerk will maintain forty hour week, but however, there is time that will be needed off from time to time. So because of the limited staffing, there will be seven Fridays that need to be approved to be closed throughout the interim period. These Fridays are listed in your packet. The July sixth is actually July eighth, I apologize for that. But these dates, if approved, will be posted on social media, in the newsletter, the website and on the door at city hall. So with that, the personnel committee did discuss this and is recommending to the city council approving these dates to close city hall during the interim period.
Thank you. Any questions on this?
So these are days that Janelle is on vacation?
We talked about it quite a bit in personnel committee, what would, you know, and again, keep in mind it's from seven.
I was going to say.
Now on Fridays, weekdays, where the interim, there's more work up at the beginning of the week. So we wanted the interim there at the beginning of the work. And those days, we just thought, let's just take those days where we know there's PTO and we'll just close it now. Instead of trying to let residents, oh, this day it's going to be open, this day it won't. Let's just take those days and close them. We'll work by a point and we'll have them out there early enough. We can try to figure out, you know, get them in earlier in the week or figure something out if need be, if something arises. But at least it'll be posted now months in advance and there shouldn't be any confusion on it.
That won't interfere with any rentals or anything like that being closed those Fridays?
And if it does, we'll, we'll still have public works here, who can get in and get, and get people if someone needs a community center. But we'll still have public works and a little bit more on these days, you know, where this might happen. There might be time, you know, if, if the clerk gets sick, wakes up sick, we might have to do something. We might have to public works, come put a sign up if the administrator won't be here on that day or has already exceeded their, her hours to work. So we may have some sporadic ones throughout and we'll just deal with those as we can and get out of social media the best we can.
Okay.
And if need be, I, I know last time I ended up coming up once or twice, just being at the desk if someone had, you know, questions and at least a person was there. So we can certainly do that again too, but. So if no more questions on this, I'll look for a motion to close city hall on May twentieth, June third, June twenty-four, July eighth, July twenty-second, August twelfth, August nineteenth.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries four zero. Seven A four, Maggie, the park commission temporary meeting date changes for June, July, and August of twenty twenty-two.
Mayor Dodge and council, during the interim period, the personnel committee has recommended that the current city administrator, myself, assist as a contract employee with the city of mayor through, to work on projects associated with the park commission. So I gladly accept that, you know, I think it would be important to keep some of the park projects moving forward. We have potential pavilion project and then planning for a new splash pad. However, with my current, my position that I've taken with the other city, I'll, there's a conflict in that schedule with the current park commission meetings. And so the personnel committee discussed and the park commission did support a recommendation to the city council that would move park commission meetings temporarily a week later than normal for the months of June, July, and August. So this would allow me to attend those meetings and, and help the city maintain those projects. So I do have those meetings listed above. It would take the regular meetings in June, July, and August for the park commission and move them back a week. So with that, I'm available for any comments.
With all the commissioners on the, it works for their schedules?
We did discuss it at the last park commission and at that meeting, the park commission was comfortable with moving those dates, yes.
All right. Outlook for a motion to approve change, temporary changing park and recommissions dates by one week for June, July, August.
I'll make that motion.
No motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries four zero. Seven A five, the addition that came down from the consent agenda, the twenty-two, twenty-two smart meter program.
All right, I apologize. This was, I need the city council to make a decision on this this evening, but I, but I do need some additional details before anything is passed. So just to recap, last year we did partner with Carver County and Racio, a smart water controller program supplier on a program that allows residents to buy smart meter, smart water controllers at a discount. And so as, in twenty twenty-one, that project did move forward and the city council did approve marketing and a contribution towards those smart controllers. So the program participation, we did get two participants only. I think part of that was getting the program set up. There were some delays on getting the, the actual controller site up and running. We're not the only city that kind of ran into issues. So I think it was kind of the first year, kind of just getting things up and running. So I think this year we could definitely improve a little bit more on marketing. Everything's already set up, so I think that's a huge benefit already. But as far as this year, we, Carver County needs us to decide whether, or the dollar amount that we'd like to contribute. If we want to stay, again, at the twenty dollars. So last year we, we approved funding fifty controllers at twenty dollars. So that was a thousand dollar allocation. So the first fifty that were purchased, we would provide twenty dollars towards that. Again, we had two participants last year. So with that, part of the agreement this year, if we want to move forward with the program again, is deciding what that dollar amount will be, if we want to stay at the twenty. Or I did include some other ideas. All cities range in what they contribute, so I just gave some ideas of what that would look like. So I'm recommending that we do move forward with the program again. It's year two, kind of see how things kind of go. Do the incentive program again. We just need to decide a dollar amount. Maybe if we up the dollar amount a little bit, it would incentivize even further people utilizing the program. But once, if we determine a dollar amount and if we want to move forward, I would recommend approving resolution five dash nine dash twenty-two dash seventeen that approves, approves the agreement between the city of mayor and Carver County and establishes that dollar amount. So with that, I can take any questions and just, and looking for a discussion and a motion.
And last year, we, for advertising it, we did put it in the water bill, if I remember right, and on social media and our.
We, we did. So we do actually have a website, just like a specific tag dedicated to this program. So it does provide links to Racio and Carver County, just explaining the program further. It also does provide a pretty decent summary of the program and what the application process looks like. It's, it's pretty simple for applicants to, to log in and, and decide what would work best for them. Again, instructions are on the website. But yeah, I think we would do similar processes last year. Maybe even hang some posters up at city hall.
I think we did a, a good job getting it out there. I remember seeing on social media, residents talking back and forth about it, other residents were telling. So me only seeing two of them from last year. I know for me, I would rather this year maybe try to give a little bit bigger, maybe the fifty dollar, you know, for the first twenty and see what, try to, I'm imagining its price point to that, that if we only had two at the hundred and fifty dollars or one seventy, that, you know, they're looking at their return on investment and what's going to say, you know, those things. But I would rather just up it for, and if we go to the first twenty, we can always revisit it and put more in if we feel, you know, if it's really taking off.
Yep, we have thirty people sign up in the first week.
Try and maybe try to get more people to use it. I mean, it's a great water conservation program. I love investing into this. And did we budget, did we budget for this or is this just a thousand dollar thing that just kind of?
Um, yeah, we budgeted for it this year, the, the thousand, yeah.
So and we would have had nine hundred and sixty dollars from, yeah, nine hundred and sixty dollars from last year too. So that gives us a little bit of a buffer too, if we look at it that way.
Right.
We could go up to even forty at fifty dollars.
You know, either way, because we can always come back and, and approve more.
Right.
However, if we want to just try, maybe use our thousand that we have budgeted for twenty twenty-two and then if we start getting a, a lot of interest, we can then go back. I'm open to any, any motion someone wants to make.
Yeah, I think it would even provide you good data next year when you reassess the program to see if, see if you do get an increase, so.
If it's really the price point on it.
I'll make a motion to cover the first fifty dollars of twenty of the controllers.
Motion to give a fifty dollar discount for the first twenty. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? I'd like to say, well, once we get, you know, if we get ten of them, if the number's growing, let's get it back to council if we want to get more in there and, and, you know, see where we are in the year. And, you know, like Pat said, if we get fifteen of them right away in June, let's look at, you know, getting more in there, so.
Yeah, and if we don't, if we have two, then, I mean, we either have to decide if we're going to continue or if we need to up it more and.
Maybe go deeper discounts, yeah. Yeah, that'll, that's, that's a good idea too. Okay, any, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries four zero.
So with that amount determined, now the next step would be considering approval of the agreement for twenty twenty-two?
Yes, thank you. Outlook for motion to approve resolution five dash nine dash twenty-two dash seventeen.
I'll make that motion.
A second.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries four zero. Seven B one, fire department coverall purchase.
Mayor Dodge and council, so as we discussed at the last workshop in April, the fire department is looking at purchasing thirty replacement coveralls for its firefighters. The current coveralls were purchased twenty years ago and need to be replaced. So the coveralls are commonly worn to medical calls and other non-fire related calls. So, and Andy, if you want to go into more for that, we can go into that later, kind of what they're used for. But it's just more of a professional presence. Instead of twenty years ago, we used to just wear day-to-day clothes to those calls, so. The financial cost for each coverall is three hundred and thirty-eight dollars. The total cost for thirty is ten thousand one hundred and forty dollars. It was not a budgeted item for twenty twenty-two, but with ARPA funding, we did bring this up at the workshop meeting in April. So the purchase could, would be covered under ARPA. And then I think at that meeting, there was also a request to look at other options in which the city could pay for it. It could also come out of the fire capital fund. It was not part of the long-term plan schedule, but it is a low enough dollar amount that it could be paid out of that fund and it wouldn't interrupt significantly any of the other projects planned in the future. So with that, I'm recommending that the city council does move forward with purchasing the coveralls. I think we, after twenty years, I think we, it makes sense to get another, a replacement set. But asking the council to discuss if they want to purchase it either out of, with ARPA funds or out of the fire capital fund.
Thank you. Chief Matt Sol, do you have anything you want to add?
Yeah, so the coveralls we use, it first of all identifies us when we're on medical calls. Also, you can think on a medical call, off our, pulling that we're wearing and stuff like that. So when we get back and we get, it can be taken off, thrown in the wash or stuff like that for, on any type of things.
Is thirty the current?
Well, thirty is our, thirty is what we are, our full roster is thirty. Right now, we are currently standing at twenty-eight members. But I do have a couple rescue reserves and stuff that are on that as well, so, or that would add to that. So yeah, that's where we got the thirty.
Yeah, I, I think we should use the, the fund for this personally.
Which, which?
The, yes. Can you go back?
Oh, yep, sorry.
Yeah, the ARPA fund.
Agreed. And so Andy, does everybody have coveralls now?
Yes, currently everybody does have.
Okay.
A set of coveralls. One thing that we are looking at or possibly going to, if we do get the new coveralls, we are going to keep the old coveralls and utilize them on possibly on grass fire scenarios. The, the coveralls that we do have are fire retardant. And on a grass fire, it's usually in heat. A lot of wildland firefighters just use this type of gear or something like that for that instead of in our real heavy turnout gear. And so it's, so we would utilize those old ones yet. They would still kind of keep them, but then would use them for grass fires and stuff like that instead. That way, you know, they get their, we're not bringing that into somebody's, you know, using the same pair for multiple purposes that, you know, otherwise you're going to bring that stuff into somebody's home or something like that on a medical.
And I agree with that. I think that's a good point, if you can move into that. And I think that's why it's even more important to use the AR. PA fund for these, because I got to assume even the old ones at twenty years old, that fire retardant stuff is breaking down and not safe. I'd almost rather look at, if that's the direction you're going to go for grass fires, you know, to help with heat exhaustion, helps, I'd rather get two sets then and then maybe use the, just the capital fund for the second set if need be, would be my preference because I'd get worried using those old ones personally.
Are they all twenty years old or some of them newer, like?
The majority, the majority is, well, so, you know, twenty years ago, wherever we bought everybody some. As years have gone on, members have, have gone off, you know, we've tried to, you know, utilize those, but we've had to, you know, buy some new pairs, you know, in the interim. So not all of them are that, but I would say the majority of them.
And what is the lifespan?
On something like that, there's no real lifespan because it's something, you know, our, our actual turnout gear has a ten-year lifespan and stuff that's, you know, kind of an OSHA or NFPA type thing. But this type of stuff doesn't fall under that.
Yeah, because I am kind of with Mike, right? Like I'd have no problems doing the ARPA for one set if, right? And then still considering a second set. I mean, I know it's not in the budget, but, I mean, maybe we talk about it for next year, you know?
I'm assuming you could get different colors or is red pretty much the, I mean, if you, if we got to two pair and wanted to separate, here's for fire, here's for medical.
Green or turnout color, yeah.
Okay. All right, so with that, I'll look for a motion to approve the purchase of 30 coveralls for $10,140 with the ARPA fund.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries 4-0. Thank you, chief, for coming in. Okay, city council reports. Councilmember Wagner, anything to report on?
No.
Councilmember McNeely.
Just had Personnel last week and we discussed what we talked about in this meeting.
Yep. Councilmember Halt.
Nope, not really.
And as Nikki said, we, I only had Personnel Committee last week. We've covered it all. I do have Public Works tomorrow morning to discuss some of the projects. With that, I'll look for, no, with that, I'll take a minute now to, as people know, our city administrator is resigning and moving on. So I do want to thank her from staff, residents, council for all your work, all your efforts, Maggie. You've really grown a ton in these four years that you've been here. A breath of fresh air. It's been great, so I want to thank you for everything. Good luck in your new endeavors. Keep growing, keep developing. And big, big and better things will come. So with that, I do have a plaque here I'd like to present to you, an appreciation award presented to Margaret McCollum, an appreciation for your outstanding service to the city of mayor, 2017 to 2022. Thank you for everything, city council staff and residents. So with that, Maggie, where do you? Up front. Everyone hiding. Well, not everyone's. You get the paper out. We'll photoshop it. We'll photoshop it. Don't worry.
Yeah, well, we got, I got a good camera. Let me go here. Thanks. Good job. Hold up the rest. Don.
Come on, Don.
I have to step back a little bit. I'll edit this out. All right, it's good.
All right, so with that, now I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. We are adjourned. And like I said, if anyone wants to stop up at knuckleheads, we're going to run up there. If anyone wants to have a discussion.